Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Westminster Select Board meeting.
All right, 8/6 we will call the meeting of the Westminster Select Board to order Wednesday, September 13th. Any adjustments to the agenda? All right, seeing time, we'll go to acceptance of minutes. Do we want to do these one at a time? All right, we start with the minutes from August 23rd, 2023.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes of August 23rd, 2023, all of your favor.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes from August 30th, 2023, that's a special meeting in very few bits.
So that's a three, I thought that's a four, that one was four zero. Yep, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Yes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes of August 30th, 2023, all of your favor.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to September 8th, 2023, this is a special meeting in conjunction with Town Manager Hiring Committee.
Anybody?
So moved.
Thank you.
Moved to accept.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes of September 8th, 2023, all of your favor.
Aye.
Aye.
You abstained?
Wasn't here.
You weren't here there either, okay, thank you.
Communications and public comments.
That's a three zero and that's an abstain. And August 30th was, you weren't there either, so that's a three, right? Just, okay, just, no, that's all. Okay, sorry, yep, I'm good.
All right, moving on to unfinished business, website discussion.
Hi, I'm Sarah Waldo, and I'm assuming that the Select Board received my letter addressing the barriers of the website. And I just wondered if the Select Board has any plans to seek a new person who would design a website that's user-friendly, accessible, attractive, up-to-date, you know, all the things a website should be. So I just wondered if you had anything to say about that, or I don't really know who is the person who would, or the body who would address that.
Yeah, I was under the impression that there wasn't anybody who was managing our website, and after receiving your letter, I was told different information. So some of it is what would you like to see on the website? I know there was, you had requested stuff about the Board of Civil Authority having things posted on the website.
I think any entity in town should be able to access their section of a website and post photographs or things that are going on. You know, if you look at any other towns' websites, I looked at Putney and Rattleboro for instance, and they have, I guess their website builder is Government Websites by Catelis, C-A-T-E-L-I-S. And, you know, they both have a website, they look identical, they have a very different design, but there were, it was clear what was happening in the town. There was a calendar with all the events going on. I mean, I can't tell you exactly what should be in a website, but I could refer you to another town's website, and you can see how to navigate it. And for instance, to get into this meeting by Zoom, you have to go through pages and go to, you know, road more, some of those little tiny words where you would never, you would never be able to even imagine that that would be the way you could access. It's just not reasonable. You know, this is our town, you want to, you know, people want to find out about the townspeople, want to find out what's going on. It's really impossible to do that. It'd be nice to have more civic engagement through the website, because that's how a lot of people get information and communicate. So I would encourage the town to, you know, and maybe, you know, look at this Catalyst, Government Websites by Catalyst. I have no idea what kind of, what they charge to build the website. But anyway, that's my concern, and that's, I have it said.
Susan Harlow. Sarah's being very nice. This is about the third time I've been here in the last couple of years on this issue. So I guess I'm wondering what the holdup is, and as you know, we have a website that was three quarters of the way done. We have had several suggestions we could call, and how they worked out, but I have, what's the holdup? It's one question to you. Because we did several years ago allocate money for a new website, and maybe not next year, you maybe forgot it last year, but you know, but it used to happen, that's what I'm saying, but...
Do you know the status of what?
Russ?
Yeah, do you know the status of what he had done? Is it accessible by somebody?
Yes.
To use it?
It's not live, but there is, and I haven't looked at it for a year, year and a half, but there is a link that you can go to, if you have it, which I should still have, and you can go and see. And so the design is all there, the information is, most of it is old and it's had to be updated, but you know, the navigation is all there. Someone said to me, if a new person works on it, they want to start their whole, some whole bit of hype, and why you need to do that. I can send that link to someone, and you can see it's a much better website, just not ready to go live.
I thought it was great when we previewed it.
Did you see that? Yeah, yeah, exactly, so, but it's been a year and a half, I don't know if it goes away or what, but...
No, I believe it should still be there.
Yeah, yeah, anyway, I'm pretty sure I still have a link, or whatever, so...
And we did allocate money for somebody, I can't remember who that was either.
Well, then there was someone else who worked on it.
So...
Yeah, and then she disappeared and no one could get hold of her.
And I told, I mean, just for the record, I'm totally against going with somebody that is like an independent, does it on the side, kind of, you know, the upper... Well, I shouldn't say that, I'll take that back. Ross was a series of unfortunate events.
Right, right, right.
The other one was not that.
Right, exactly, so...
I would more lean towards a company, the best thing.
Yeah, I mean, there's got to be someone who does town websites, for sure, maybe it happens right all over again, but we did allocate, we allocated $2,500, my last year on the board, to update the website, or do a new website and then maintain it, you know, someone a couple hours a week to maintain it. Anyway, I'm just curious, Sarah, I say thank you.
My sense is that if you have a new person come in to work in a website, they don't want to go back to an old website and try to figure out how to juggle around. They'll want to just have the systems that they work with, or the platforms or whatever, and be able, because they're fluid with that, so to kind of redo an old crappy website is a real waste of time.
But there would be information, the original information they could find, like departments, et cetera, et cetera.
But I would suggest that you look at Putney's, have Putney website and Rattleboro, because that name is at the very bottom, Government Websites by Catelis. So they, C-A-T-E-L-I-S, so obviously they do, you know, they're not just doing Putney and Rattleboro, they're probably doing websites all over the place.
Would you sign off that, Lou?
I will.
Please do.
Yeah.
Kelly has the contact information for whoever has been doing the current website, which... I don't know if we're really providing them with information and content to put on the website.
There's the other issue, right?
We tried to do that, the Conservation Commission, tried to contact the woman that was supposed to be, you know, managing the website, Latisha, or something like that.
I got a man's name.
Oh.
Yeah, no, actually, he was the second one after Russ, when he like disappeared in the...
Yeah, they disappeared or something.
I mean, we can, we send things to Kelly, like our minutes and our meetings, but that is really, you know, and she's able to...
I like to do basic things like that.
This would be like above a...
Make notes and that, I think is beyond somebody...
Just a different shape and format, and something that's colorful and user-friendly and just inviting to look at, because it's really kind of...
Thank you. I will forward that info to Kelly, Sue.
Pardon?
I'll forward that info to Kelly, and I'll try to forward it to them.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Any questions on the website, stuff?
This is another instance of us missing a leader, we've been going to town manager and pushing stuff. So I think we're maybe some headway there.
Yes, I understand.
I think if we can be patient for a little bit, those are the kind of things we can throw in at our lap, we could walk in the door.
Hopefully that will happen, yes. All right, moving on to the aqueduct discussion.
Oh, good.
Lou.
Yes.
All right.
So you guys have read this newspaper article. Problem right now is, I've been the operator, how many years, 12?
That all?
That all, it's enough. And it's 365 days a year, constantly. And you can get people to do readings, but if you have to put a chlorine tablet in, I have to go up and do it, because I'm the operator. And I'm old, I'll be honest, I'm 75. I got money coming and I want to travel and, you know, I'm trying to get the system set up for the next 100 years, so we don't run into this situation again. Because all volunteer ain't going to hack it. You can't just take people off the street now and tell them to do VOC tests, all these other tests that all these towns are doing, because they can't do them, you know? We can get an operator, but it's pretty hard to find one, and you're talking 45, 50 grand a year for somebody to do it. So there's another problem. Now, if I can get the state to forgive half of the whole system, and upgrade it to the point where it's almost 99% automated, you wouldn't need an operator that much anymore, would you? And that's really what the goal of all this is to do. You can put sensors up there that say, my pH is this, my chlorine is this. Right now, all my meters are electromagnetic, and they dial up on a cell phone at night. I just go on the website and go on and look at them. And I can tell whether there's leaks, problems, or anything else. So, and Linda does, what, 55, 52 houses a year?
But you're licensed to do the work you do, and you have to get those renewed all the time.
Yeah, I just renewed it.
It's not like she just does it, and anybody can do it, they have to be licensed.
You have to take the test, and it's like 100 questions.
And do reports and all that kind of stuff, and yearly, send that out to all the people.
Right, consumer reports, all that stuff.
I mean, it's a lot of stuff that you guys, I just do the billing and pay the bills, or the bank, when I get the money from the bills, I send out, that's quarterly, and doing the taxes and that sort of thing.
I do all the collections.
But also, also, I've done it since Donna Rice died, for the, like, early 2000s or something like that, but I've done it since then, and I don't get paid.
I took over.
I just really can't seem to be doing it, quite honestly, but, you know, it is a lot of work.
What does it cost to be on it for your, like, average house? Is it just a flat fee per house, or how?
It's $300 a year.
For you?
Yeah.
It's $75 a quarter.
Now, houses that have more tenants, we charge more.
Lou, you got a question?
He said something, I'm sorry, I just don't want to get too far. He said have the state forgive what? He said have the state forgive...
A loan. In other words, say I have to spend $300,000, the state would be up, have given us for so much, based on the average income, which the crappier the income is, the better. Don't ask me why that theory works, but...
Let me, see if I can bottle the end to it quick, because I'm on the, I'm on the aqueduct, so we can save everyone's time here, and I really appreciate everything you guys do. I don't think people really realize just what goes on. So there's a couple issues here, there's 55, 52, excuse me, private homeowners.
Right.
So you're going to have an objection there on any type of, you know, because that's going to be a minority of the people, the taxpayers, and you're going to have an objection from the people. Second, are the people of a pecuniary interest drilling 55 new wells? They're going to be all over that, ethics or no ethics. However, we do have the town hall, the fire department, post office, and the institute, although the institute is technically separate, it is a very core part of our, of our town, and...
You had it go off Westminster one time.
Right, and we do give money to other places, so what I'm saying is, if I'm going to be an advocate in a limited time, I have less than this board.
Yeah.
I guess the three things I would like to see is, you mentioned that the state is going to force policy changes that are going to force us to make certain upgrades or certain things. I think what we need to see as a board, well, certainly I would, speaking for myself, exactly what that looks like, what the timeline it is, and if you can get that together, that would be great.
I can give you that, because it's stated right in my operating permit.
That's terrific, and that's what we need to see, like, what do we have to do? The second part is what the total cost of bringing it up to the state code would be.
And that's what that PER is going to help to determine.
Okay.
That's the...
And then third, in order to accomplish one and two, is it you, is it your position that you would be asking that the Select Board to allocate, or possibly YARPA funds to allocate, certain funds to make sure one and two can be accomplished, given, for example, this, this study?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, you have to have electricity, we don't have any electricity. And I got away with that, because I told them it was green. So I put them off for three years of being green, but that finally ended with the state. They don't want to hear that anymore.
Right.
And I guess they're worried about low pressure in the system, which is, you're supposed to be 25 at least. We're 15, where the fire department is, it's five pounds. So, and that helps with the disinfection, I guess, and all that, with having a higher water pressure.
Thank you. Lastly, part four would be, in the event that 1 through 3 are not accomplished, then what would be the exit strategy and cost to migrating the 55 entities away from it? Are we required, again, with this state's EPA department, or whatever the hell those people do? What are we going to do with this system that needs to obviously be either mothballed or somehow put to bed? Is there going to be costs associated with that?
I'm sure there would be.
Okay, so if we had those four things, like, I tell you guys right now, I'd be, that would be very helpful for me to get my hands around it and start to talk to people about why this might be a good idea to consider perhaps maybe taking over or being a part of it.
Even being a part of it, you know, even let's say the end of the billing and all that crap, you know, somebody else was doing that, which we can get a cost on that.
We can find out if there's somebody that can do that.
The big situation's an operator, and the upgrades we need.
Well, we've been lucky so far, actually, the state has grandfathered a lot of stuff. I mean, it's existed since 18, well, it was incorporated in 18, but it was put in in 1790. But it's important to alleviate, and because we're so small, because it's been working well, we've been forgiven having to do all of this stuff.
What I got to do is I'll get you a copy of the PER when it's done, and the engineers set everything, and then I'll give you guys a copy of it.
I appreciate it, because I just, it'll be helpful for me, because the resistance against this is going to be, it's going to be very difficult for me to navigate.
Let me ask you, how many private water systems are in the state of Vermont? Not very many.
Right.
And a lot of these towns are even smaller than us. I have the municipal water.
I am completely 1000% with you, this is about self-interest, pecuniary interest, it's nothing about doing the right thing. This is going to be about what's in it for me, what's not in it for me, taxpayer versus taxpayer, and that's how this is going to go down.
Well, one of the good things is, all the water mains were replaced in 1960. And you see this water main out there, 200 years old, so we're in good shape there. We have to do a copper and lead pipe survey, we have no lead pipes left, so that expense is gone.
No, you've done a fabulous job.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get it. I don't want to leave it in a mess. You know, Woody got mad one day and said, I'm not going to do it anymore. And the state said, oh, you've got a license, you're stuck to it for two years.
Right.
So I took over, just to save it, and then I got roped in.
But again, hundreds of households don't have any, have any tax interest in this, in saving the aqueduct. However, we still have the town hall, we still have the fire department tied, we have the post office on it.
We also have...
So they would have to go through here to get approval to drill wells using town money, to take those two off, I think the...
You know what they quoted me to drill a well up there?
$35,000.
Hundred grand.
Really?
Yeah, if I wanted to drill a well up there.
Up there?
Yeah, the state, it would cost me $100,000.
Are there grants available for that?
For wells?
Yeah.
There probably is, but who knows where they are, and right now, with all these floods and everything.
Sure. All right, for me, that's it, if I could get that information, guys, that would be incredibly helpful, so we could have at least a basic schematic and have a procedure.
Yeah, not a problem.
Thank you, Lou.
I contacted, I talked to Floyd, maybe his son wants to do it, but they got hot water down at the, Putney. They had a water test come back, and it was positive, so they had to take 10 more. So they're kind of down on it, doing it. Because, you know, if you fail, you know, yeah, you have to boil water, you have to send out everybody to boil water, which we used to do on a regular basis, because we weren't chlorinating all the time. And even if it's coliform positive, there's no real proof that it is in the water system. It's just an indicator, because what they do is they incubate the water and see if anything grows in it overnight.
If all of that can be placed in a synopsis in a three-page report, that would be helpful for the...
Yeah, I'll get you what you need, I'll get my PER done, I'll get it over to you guys.
Thank you very much, it'd be very helpful.
Yeah, I have the operating permit, which is available to the public, I think it was even put up at the library. It's like 35 pages.
If it's electronic, you can send it to the town hall.
Yeah, I'll send it, not a problem.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Lou. Thanks, Linda.
Is this the accounting guy? Is it? I'm just saving.
All right, moving on to grants for the Northwest Westminster Community House and Westminster West. That would be me, thank you.
I became aware of some grants through the Freedom Regional Commission of funding for, it's called the Municipal Energy Refugeion Program. It's a Vermont program where they provide grants to for heating systems and such like that. So I would like to pursue this for the Westminster West Town Hall and the Northwest Westminster Community House. And I guess I'm asking your permission to follow through on that.
I don't need.
Yeah, I mean, it's, does it, at this point, you don't need anything from us, other than... Listen to it and... Yes, yeah, I don't, I have no idea where it's going to go, I just, before I put my effort into it, I wanted to make sure you were all on board.
And then, I have Johnny, I have a grant through, let's do the Rattleboro Development Credit Corporation, but it's the USDA World Development. And last meeting, I don't know if you remember Rachel here, so she had gotten ahold of me and said there was some funds for planning and design, and it's kind of time-sensitive, so it's got to be done by the end of this month. So I have, so what it is, is you fill out the process, and then they decide if they're going to give you a grant or not. They're going to write you a letter and say they're going to give you the grant, but it's got to be facilitated through you. It's like, if we do some design work, the person who's doing the design work would bill you the grant money, and you would have to turn around, pay him, and then in 30 days, they give you the money.
Paying in version.
Right, so I'm trying to see if that's something that's possible. That's, that's just for the Northwest Westminster Community House.
What is the timeframe, the end of...
I think it has, let's see, the grant agreement for work done before 9:30, so the end of the month.
So if we, if you sent us a copy of that info, and then we could review it and we could vote on it at the next meeting?
That'd be great.
Because that would be what, 20?
I mean, I have it right here, the info, I mean, it's just telling you that you have to, I mean, they're part of, what they serve is Westminster, but I could read that it's, so the requirements to consider, but I guess I don't want to take all your time, so I guess I could just give this to you.
Okay.
And then you can go from there, I mean, I guess you could ask the town manager to apply for it, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, we can, I can have the office make copies for everybody, and then I'll leave that original in the office downstairs.
Okay.
For you to pick up when you come in.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss and vote at the next meeting. Sound there? What's the next meeting? Uh, the 20th. 27.
The 27th, so yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there another money they put on that that you have to send them? It sounded to me like they had to give them money and then they...
No, you just, like, our plan was that, it said the grant amount would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,000 to $3,000. So what I have is, Tom Goldsmith is doing all the planning, so it was going to go to him. He was going to do that, but he was, he's starting to do that, because we have to, in order to get bids and stuff like that, you're going to need something to say what we want done. So this is just a grant that's just getting us started, kind of preliminary to start the ball rolling.
Did you get the question sent to you?
We ended up with 12 to 15 spots, so we thought that that would be doable, and Chuck seems to think that it would work, with the town going through the news. So that was a concern, but I don't know if it's something that you agree on today, that we put out the grant. That's all you have to do is put out the grant, they might just say that, no, this is not going to do it, but it might be that, they say they're going to give you the award, and then we'll go from there. And it's not that the town's going to have to come up with any money at all. So it's just kind of trying to use up this one grant, because she said there's other grants down the road, but this is just something that she can get, if we do it by the end of the month. I guess we could still do it if you want to do it, you know, the 27th, we still have to the 30th, so... Or you could decide today that we're, I could give this to the town manager, the town manager can fill... The town manager can fill it out and then send it off and then we'll just go from there and see what happens. But that's up to you.
All right, who wants to make one?
Make a motion that we give this to the town manager.
And discuss again at the next meeting?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fine. All right, I am, because Larry's waiting patiently, I'm gonna make an adjustment to the agenda. The board is willing to do that. We'll move the road foreman's report up to after, between A and B. And we'll go into executive session after that. And then we can, if you mean, finish the rest after. Does that work for everybody? And then Larry doesn't have to wait.
So you, I don't understand, I'm sorry.
I'm shoving the executive session, I'm moving.
Up under new business?
Yeah, uh, yes, under new business. So we're gonna, the town plan re-adoption and then we're gonna do Chuck's road foreman's report and then we'll go into an executive session.
Okay.
You want a motion to adjust the agenda, Millie? Would that be helpful?
Uh, I think she can do whatever she, she wants, as I'm sitting here with legal counsel. But you probably wouldn't hurt to make a motion.
So, motion to move, adjust A, B, C, D and E under new business discussion. Item six, tonight's agenda. Moving the road foreman's report from D to B. An executive session from E to C. Moving propane tanks from B to E.
Thank you.
In fact, I'm sorry, B to D. In fact, TV from C to E.
Back TV, C to D.
Yep.
Okay.
Second motion. Motion has been made, seconded. Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Are you okay, Millie?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, all right, so moving on to the new business. The town plan, re-adoption of the old plan. So the planning commission isn't going to have the new town plan ready before it needs to be approved. And I put this on the agenda so that we could re-adopt it. But I received an email from Mike McConnell at the Wyndham Regional Commission, who is working with the planning commission. And he said that there are some updates that need to be done to the current old plan before we approve that. So I'm going to table the town plan re-adoption until we have follow-up from the planning commission and Mike McConnell.
Do we still have time?
We have until October first.
So that's on the next.
That's on the next meeting.
Very good.
Yes.
Okay. So, as all those road meetings continue, we're ditching, mowing, cover replacement. The grader is up in Springfield. It's got cones going, everything from the front end to the fan speed on the engine. I'm definitely there. A wiring error is issue or a computer issue. They're flipping into it because they didn't have the equipment to manipulate it. Sunday, the tent, we received three four, five inches of rain and just under an hour on the south end of town. Minor road hit pretty hard. It was a culvert, big culvert at the bottom, four foot culvert. And it took all the water it could. Four hit walls, state engineered, not, it's not big enough.
Minor road?
Uh, McKinnon Road.
McKinnon.
And then it went up over the hill from McKinnon, it went down, Pine Banks Road, February. Dagger Road, Sol Bay Road. We were lucky, we didn't have a lot of damage, just minor stuff really. This was the worst, two dump trucks loaded the ledge and a load of gravel and was back in business. So I contacted the ANR and they're gonna come out and look at some of these culverts that just wouldn't take the water. They're big enough so that they have to be involved. I can just go, I'm gonna put in six foot culvert. You have to have them involved with it, so. I've been working on paving budget stuff. I'm trying to come up with a plan so that we put money enough away for paving. And Springfield Paving gave me a proposal. I've asked basins to two. And what it is, what I've asked for is two miles of asphalt to be shimmed and paved. I mean, it's got wheel ruts, it's double wheel ruts and paved all of it. Some years you would only do a mile and you would mill it or re-ground it and pave it. Some years you would do the two, cause that would work. But I was, but the, the price would come out in the wash, you know, for the mile versus the two miles. Some years we would be able to get, we'd be eligible for better roads grants. And we could, you know, replane a section of road, take it back to dirt it might need it and reshape it and then pave it. But we've got twenty miles of asphalt and when we only do a mile a year, you're asking a mile of road to last twenty years. That doesn't happen. So that's why some of our roads are pretty poor, poor shape, is because they're just going too far without rail maintenance. So, like I said, that's what I'm, I'm kinda working on so that when we go budget time, we can be thinking about what we wanna do and how we wanna do it. And I'm sure, you know, maybe you guys have a better idea, I don't know. You know, every section of road has a different need. So I was trying to come up with something that would, kind of a blanket thing that would work. Zach went for his CDL test. He passed his pre-trip. He passed everything but driving. On Route eleven, he went three miles over the speed limit and failed it. He's gonna go back on, look, next Thursday, drive again. All those things. Uh, next week, we'll be getting the grader, either rollerback or rock anyone. And as soon as we get the grader back, we're gonna start follow grading. As soon as I feel as though we're not gonna get a deluge of rain. And then we do have potholes around on some of our dirt roads. But there's a hard crust built on these dirt roads that it's, it's shedding the water, it's just like asphalt. And if we go and stir that up and it doesn't get compacted properly before we get another four or five inches of rain, we're gonna lose roads. B camp has installed the heaters and is waiting for the propane tanks to be installed so he can test them. Other than that, they're done. So I got any questions, concerns, complaints, thoughts, or ideas?
What's the status on the brush saw?
The brush?
The, uh.
It's, we.
Are we using it? Did they figure?
Yeah, no, no, it's back, it's fixed. They put a new hydraulic motor on it. Took it back, they tested it, they felt it was faulty right from the factory and they put a new.
I hadn't seen it, that's why.
Yeah, no, and we've been mowing, go inside mowing, we haven't been using it. We should, we could be, we could be using two more tractors if we have it. Goes faster than you can cut it, but.
I have a question about the roller beam. Is the captain's chair a roller beam?
Yes, yeah, we purchased it together four years ago. It was before, it's just before I started. And it, it seems to work pretty well. You just have to be kind of patient with their needs too, so it's balanced.
The roads are much better.
I think it makes a difference.
It makes a huge difference, which is really, yeah, so great, I think. Any other questions for Chuck? All right. Larry was off with the plan.
So I have a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Am I stopping this? No one's executive session, so I'm putting it back up? Okay.
Yeah, there's no minutes during.
That's what I figured and I wasn't sure if there was going to be stuff after it or not. So I'll have to let them know.
Although this motion, going to executive session, is.
Yes.
Attorney Stacey, do you have any idea about time?
Well, how long will it be here? Well, it's totally up to these guys. I've got a. My, uh.
I have never hired a town manager.
My comment will be less than fifty minutes.
I mean, I can't, I can't have like a whole lot of, you can do stuff.
I don't know if they'll do more than fifty or twenty minutes. Depends how much discussion they wanna do about the candidates. If there's not gonna be much discussion from you there, my, my work here is done. I'm gonna hand you what's been done and it won't take me long to explain it.
So there's no motion for executive session?
Yes, there has to be a motion.
Yeah, there, there wasn't, but there's.
There's gonna be.
And, and so if you'll take that in the minutes, we have to do that.
Yep.
Motion to move into executive session.
Thank you, Kevin.